All right, Chris.
All righty, is, uh, do I kick it off? It's been a little rusty on this one.
I'll, I'll kick it off. I'll call to order this special meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors and King George Planning Commission. All right, um, I open it, Mr. Parker, would you like to open?
Yep, and I too will open this, uh, thirteenth February twenty twenty-four meeting of the King George County Planning Commission. And for the record, we do have a quorum. There we go, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Is there any amendments to the agenda?
None that I'm aware of.
All right. That being said, we'll move on to public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to give a public comment? Is there anybody online, Mr. Dines?
No, Madam Chair.
Do we have any correspondence that anyone's received concerning this? Nope. That being said, we will close public comment. So I will read the discussion item and we'll open it up, I guess, the floor. Mr. Parker, is that good with you?
Absolutely, please proceed.
All right, discussion fifteen point two dash two-two-one-two. Qualifications, appointment, and removal terms and compensation of members of the local planning commissions. A local planning commission shall consist of not less than five nor more than fifteen members appointed by the governing body, all of whom shall be residents of the locality qualified by knowledge and experience to make decisions on questions of community growth and development, provided that at least one half of the members so appointed shall be owners of real property. The local governing body may require each member of the commission to take an oath of office. Kind of sums it up. So, let's see, how, Mr. Parker, would you like to?
Do, uh-
Or I'll frame the question, or you go first?
I think, uh, I speak at least on behalf of the board members or planning commission members, I should say, that I've spoken to about this. I think we may know where, where y'all are headed on this, but we're open for discussion on it. We'd love to hear what you have to say.
All right, and I'll open it up to our board, and I'll bring it up because I had originally brought this up. So, many times over the years, many me committees I've been on at the state level and talking to some of our past, heads of the community development, I think we might, Mr. Stewart, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, we might have the most planning commission members in the state of Virginia.
We do.
And, and so, is that the most effective? Should we go to five, seven? What, what should be the makeup? And to have that discussion now before, we have a whole slate of officers that are open for renewal? How do we, how do we want to proceed? Because you've heard the positive and the negative of having such a large, uh, planning commission. So, at least for me, I thought now would be the time to have that discussion, whether we want to make that move or not, not, it's just about how do we want the makeup? Is it, is it too much? Is it too, what, what, how do, how does everybody feel about it? So I'm going to go around the table, and I'm going to start with our new members. Mr. Solans? And I'm just going to go around the table.
So I've heard, um, thank you, Madam Chair, I've, I've heard the, the pros and cons, um, in different, uh, context, basically in our own context. I would like to hear what the folks here say. I know I've talked to Mr. Kendrick, I've talked to Mr. Fox. Don't let me speak for you. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but I think they support keeping it at ten. Um, they like the fact that there is a greater amount of diversity by having a, a larger number of folks. So more diversity of thought means better advisement. Personally, I, I like that myself. I'm, I'm cool with saying it's ten.
Mr. Stroud?
I have a question. I'm not sure about, are members of the planning commission compensated?
We can be. It's optional, but we get fifty dollars a meeting, and they tell us not to spend it all in one place. Yeah, some folks waive it.
And just for a clarification point to Mr. Solans, we currently have nine members. Mr. DeVries, uh, handed in his resignation about a month ago, so we're sitting at nine right now.
Mr. Stroud, do you have any other questions, thoughts at this time?
I, I don't have any. Well, I guess I do have a question, but what I would like to know is, I mean, diversity can mean a lot of things. But, you know, I guess I'm kind of interested in why so many? And does anybody feel like having so many, you know, sometimes do you feel like, okay, well, if too many make a decision, does it help making a decision? Is it because there's too much work, not enough work? You know, why? Why, why so many?
So, the original plan of, I asked this question, we went through this a number of years back. It's ten because it's two per board member, two appointments per board member. Y'all each get two. And when the discussion came about, I know a number of years back, again, um, Mr. Kendrick can help me on this one, but I believe it was nobody wanted to relinquish their one or more appointments.
That's as I remember it, yeah.
I would actually, if I'm, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
Comment, but, uh, I would actually turn it around and say that if the planning commission, and that's an if, I would be subjective, that if it's functioning efficiently and not letting matters get delayed or unaddressed, I'd actually ask, why not? Because the mission of the planning commissions, I think everybody is aware, is a deliberative body. It's a consultative body. We, we don't actually improve much or anything. So, I feel I have to sit and think about this as a member of the citizenry, not as a member of the planning commission. I want my board of supervisors getting a full and robust debate and discussion of issues before they come up to the planning commission, because I think that's better than having less. More in this case is better than having less. Now, if the planning commission weren't functioning effectively, if things were dying on the line and we're missing deadlines, that, that's a very long story. I've only been on for a year, just a little over, I haven't seen that. Maybe someone with more years on the planning commission might comment. I've only experienced in that year very good working order, uh, on things and very robust discussion. So again, if, if I think of it as a member of the county citizenry, I think a deliberative body with more deliberation rather than less serves the county's interest. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Stroud, did you have any?
Thank you, ma'am. I think I'm okay for now.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I initially was, you know, I know that we're the only county that had so many, and I've actually thought about it the past couple of weeks. And David and I have actually, Mr. Solans has actually talked about it too. I, I've seen a reason, someone else's microphone, where it is. I've seen a reason not to keep it at ten. I don't see any reason that in the bottom, it should be up to fifteen unless the five were added for a special reason or a special session, like we wanted to bring people in to advise for a pe- a short period of time. But I've seen a reason, it's not me. So it happens when we're down here. But, um, that would be my, I, I, I've seen a problem keeping it at ten. And I believe that the guy who resigned was from Darwin, is that right? Okay.
I'll just give my thoughts and I'll turn over to you, Mr. Parker, so you can go down your line. One of the, I'm just giving out the things I've heard is, is, you know, we always have the complete, with too many bodies, there's two. Sometimes you get into the weeds, and then also it makes the process a little slower, especially when you have to have decisions made. I'm just giving you the arguments you hear from some of the other side and what I hear, you know, on, on the, the places that I travel is, is that it can, you know, when there's ten people, there's a lot of thoughts, a lot of opinions, it could take a little longer to make decisions than if you had five, it's less to manage, more efficient, and maybe seven also. So I'm just throwing that out there, the other side of the, the, uh, the coin. So, Mr. Parker, go down your line.
So I'll start, am I right, Mr. Kendrick?
All right, so, I have found ten men, I've been on the commission now longer than I can remember, to be honest with you. Um, but I've always found ten members to generate a really robust conversation. I mean, when we, when we move something out of our commission to the board of supervisors, it's had a good thorough review with ten people, and ten folks does offer a lot of different points of view. And seems like everybody or a lot of people have different things that they get hung up on. And the conversation to resolve those, I have found always to be positive. Now, in terms of speed, I would rather we be a little slower sometimes, rather than, a- and get it closer to being right than to rush things through and not consider everything it should be considered. So I'm, I'm certainly in favor of keeping it at ten. You know, I, I will tell you what I shared with Mr. Solans when we met, uh, about a month ago. We've had a lot of turnover in staff, and a lot of the, the history, i- if not, you know, the knowledge is just encumbered in the ten mem- or the nine members that we have here now. So I would, i- if you wanted to drop it down to a different number, I would certainly recommend that you not do it immediately. Just my thoughts on it. But I've, I've found ten to be a very workable number. We don't get down in the weeds that much, and I'm not aware of anything that's taken an overly long time to get out of our commission before it's passed on or acted upon, so.
Uh, I would, I would dovetail on that, actually, by saying that if you go back and pull the thread a bit on things that have taken a while, they can really be traced to the quality of the, of the submission, because sometimes the, the proposals that are submitted aren't the best. I mean, they might be minimally acceptable from a statutory standpoint, or, or what, what is acceptable, and I'll defer to Mr. Stewart for the, for the term of art. What's the minimally acceptable first pass, um, application?
Minimum standards.
Correct, thank you. Um, but that doesn't always mean that it's good or in the best interest of the county. So again, dating myself, I was appointed by Joe Grzika a long time ago, and he said, "Your function on the planning commission is to serve as the conscience of the county." That said, with two representatives from each district and two at large, you get a cross-section of the county. So the diversity comes not only in the individual bringing it, but where the individual resides, and how a particular plan or how a particular proposal may individually impact that area. Back to Mr. Kendrick's comments about, about taking a while, I would rather take a while, because we've had some things rammed through. And, and I think, I think we've served as the bouncer on a lot of things that otherwise wouldn't have been best for the county. And, I mean, you know, we can, th- there's probably an awful lot of folks out there that say that we are an impediment, and, and I won't disagree with that. And I don't know that we're supposed to be a, 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 somebody that greases the skids, right? I mean, I think we're supposed to help where we can, but if there's questions to be asked, I think we do that as well. I, I'll just finish by saying, it's no secret that we're growing. And the amount and types of proposals that are going to be coming in are probably going to grow exponentially. And if I were one of y'all, I would want somebody that would have experience to advise me properly on how to do it. Now, that said, I'm ten, starting on tenth year, I guess, on this, and I'm getting kind of tired. I got a little bit longer left in my time, but I don't know that I'll be back, but we do need to grow some of the folks who are on here. We've got a lot of new members. Excellent. The community has interest in serving, because it's always hard to find somebody, and you got to figure fifty bucks a meeting, you ain't, you're doing it, you're doing it for free. Because when you get fifty bucks a meeting, they take taxes. So, I mean, you're doing it for free, or like Ian, who defers that he's doing it for free anyway, or whoever else is doing it. But, but so if you got people that are willing to do it, you know, it's like the old saying, don't turn down nothing but your shirt collar. If they're, if they're willing to do it, and they're willing to learn, and they're willing to get certified, and help y'all, I wouldn't turn down free help. Ms. Myers?
I'm good with ten. I know the, the in the weeds, I would say momentarily, momentarily during meetings we've got in the weeds. But I think whenever something comes in front of us, we get to the end of it that night. We, we don't, if it's delayed, it's delayed because we're waiting for more of an explanation, or we're giving the applicant an opportunity to make changes and try to bring the best project we can to the board of supervisors. Uh, whether that's a yes or a no, we're, we're still working to get to the best application we can before it moves on. So, I, I'm, I'm good with ten.
Um, I would say that, you know, if, if you are not happy with any aspect of the planning commission, that you guys would be best off communicating how we can serve you. I mean, we are a commission that is supposed to serve you. The board of supervisors has such a multifaceted, uh, areas of responsibility, yet we get to focus on one specific part of, you know, important part of the county, which is, uh, the planning. I would say that, um, if you do intend to cut down the number of people on the planning commission, um, and you do it by expiring, um, appointments, then you're going to be left with the most inexperienced members on the board. And, uh, I mean, on the commission, and I, I think that that would be, uh, detrimental as we go into this year of, uh, putting together our new comprehensive plan. A lot of times, the applicants refine their proposals, uh, after going through us, and they improve, uh, before they're presented to you. So I think we're doing good work by making sure that what you guys get is the best version that the applicant can give in many cases. So, I, I don't feel any reason for changes, but, um, obviously, we, we would like to do what is in best interest for board supervisors.
Um, yes, I'd like to, to echo that. I mean, I view our role as providing the best possible recommendations to you, the board of supervisors, for the decisions you need to make. I think, uh, the number ten, the advantages, the pros are, uh, easier to get a quorum, less likely to be impacted by the absence of one or two members. I think the regional distribution is essential, particularly as we approach the development of the comp plan. The more numbers we have, the more people we can contact, the more input we can gather, the more we can, uh, individually seek and bring back to the commission, community input, which is, as you know, the, the long pole in this, in this tent. So regional distribution means at least eight, if I were to pair anything, it would be to pair the at-large, members, but, uh, not the members, the slots, but, um, I'm fine keeping them as well. The expertise that ten people bring, we have professionals, we have agricultural workers, we have, you know, uh, a diversity, um, a positive diversity of experience, age, opinion, background, military, non-military. Remember, we're, uh, uh, military is the en- one of the critical engines of the, our economy here. And yet we're an agricultural community and a waterfront community. So all those perspectives are part of who we are and should be incorporated in the comp plan. Um, as I said, the comp plan is the next big event for us. I mean, it's a lot more than reviewing applications and, and hassling developers. You know, I had my way as one of five members or three members. Uh, if we had supervisors or their agents sitting on, on the committee, it'd be a lot easier to push through a, um, a development. And I think, you know, even by right, we should be reviewing major development. I think removing that was a, was a big mistake. So, um, I want to serve the board, uh, of supervisors the best way we can, and we would welcome any suggestions you have and how we can better serve you and what you need to do.
Well, I guess I've been put in sort of the unenviable position of being the last one to speak after everyone has already brought up all of the points. That's also sort of unenviable, then I am the newest member of the planning commission here, since I just recently got appointed. However, in the few meetings that I have been attending, I've been quite honestly impressed with the breadth of opinions and, and breadth of thoughts and diversity that has come out in our discussions. There's not been a meeting yet where we've not had at least some debate over almost every topic, and we end up coming to a, an agreement about the best approach to things, and I found that to be very educational. And that leads me to the educational aspect of this. This is a pretty complicated, uh, you know, part of the operations of, of the county. This is not something that just anybody off the street can come in quickly as a new member and learn how to do. I've been drinking from a fire hose every meeting, listening to the sage experience of these people that have been for many years. And it's going to take a while for new members to really get up to speed, to be able to do what these people have been doing and, and reviewing all these processes. So that leads me to, I don't know how you would pair this quantity of members down. We've got five board members. Each one should have their representative, so you're either stuck with five or ten people. Unless somebody's going to, you know, unless you're going to decide that some board members only get one rep, some get two. So you're kind of in this incremental quantized, you know, number of participants. And I think if you dropped it down to five members, I don't know how we would select those five members. Do you select the most senior ones? Do you, do you keep the, the newest ones? Do you let them age out as their terms expire? And if that happens in a quick fashion, you're going to lose a tremendous amount of experience right at a time when we're about ready to start working on the next big process for this commission, which is the comprehensive plan and updating that. So that's going to take a lot of diverse opinions and discussions for us to get through that update. And I don't think that's something that would be done very well if we only had all the junior members, because we decided we wanted to get new blood in here. We would not have the experience of going through that update and comprehensive plan. So, I, I see no reason, I've not seen anything that's been slowed down in this process by having ten people. I think it's a reasonable thing for us to have a slightly larger body of people advising the board of supervisors. There tends to be a pyramid structure under any sort of an organization, where you've got more people working at the lower levels of things, reviewing and making recommendations to a smaller organization of people that are the real decision makers. And that's exactly the way I see the structure. We've got diverse opinions, we've got the time to discuss things, there's a lot on your plate. We can take some of that and make recommendations for, for the board to act. Uh, I don't see a problem with sticking ten personally, but I've only been here for a few months, so.
A, a lot of this is in the why, and, and like when you get to the comp plan, I can tell, Mr. Kendrick, a lot of times, I've been through, I guess, two, he's been through probably, what, eight? I don't know, forty-two, something. But a, a lot of it's, a lot of it's the why, and, and that's why it's set that away. And so you have a little bit more idea how to steer around the problems, is, is all that.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody speaking. I'm, I'm going to go down the line of the board again. Did you want any follow-up, Solans? Mr. Stroud?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, I'm impressed with the responses. So those are all very good responses, and you kind of worked off each other and each other's response. There's, uh, you know, from my experience in, you know, attending meetings and listening to meetings in the past, there, there's no doubt of the love and the concern for the county. You know, I, I know some of the people here and, that are from here, and, um, I know Mr. Parker himself, he, he'll fight you in a park a lot over issues with the county, and, uh-
I don't think much of that, I appreciate it.
You know, so those things are important. I mean, they're important to me. The people that are involved actually really care. And whenever you're, you're doing what you do for fifty dollars, um, it's not for the money. It's, it's really not, and it's not, it's not for the fifty dollars. Um, and anybody that wants another fifty dollars can sign up, but I can tell you, it, it's, it's underpaid. I appreciate the comments, and it's changed, you know, my opinion. You know, before, it was based on the number and really on, you know, it's just too many, how do you come up with a decision? But seeing how well you guys work together, um, you know, I think goes a long ways. So, before knowing that James Madison was getting five of the people, then, you know, I was far that. But now, uh, that was a joke. But, uh, but no, I'm, 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 I'm good with ten. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Davis?
Well, I, I stick to my initial, my initial thought that I think ten's a good number. And I haven't changed on that, so I support just keeping it at ten. I think it's, if one thing it does is, is what you've heard today is, is as the younger are going out and the, or the older are going out, and the younger are getting that more of that, that experience that they need. I would like to hear more about, if there's not any guidelines for it, just about what it is when people step down. You know, I, whether that, it's something that you guys do, and I don't know this, so I'm asking, because I wasn't notified the last gentleman who stepped down. But just, is there like a, a, where, you know, six months into it, where, so you're coming to an end of it, and a new board member is coming in, he's not trying to find someone to, to fit someone because someone hasn't, so. I think when you come into like an end of a term, when you get to about this six-month period or so coming into that, you should be contemplating, okay, we've got to kind of know if you're going to stay or not, so that people can start planning for that departure. I think that's a good idea.
I, I can only tell you that, you know, I'm pretty sure I'm the oldest member on the commission at the moment, that when I decide that, you know, my intent is to finish out my term that I was appointed to. But I can assure you that I will give whichever, you know, board member I'm working under at that time, I'll give them all kinds of, of adequate warning that I'm not planning on seeking another appointment, so.
Then also in our board packet at the bottom, like we discussed yesterday, there's like a warning, and we, maybe we can give a little bit more warning that this term is going to expire real soon, because it gives the term date on there. And me being the last one here, and it seemed like I was the one driving it, and I just wanted the discussion, because it has been mentioned a lot, and it, it, it just, we came to a consensus, and the consensus seems to keep it the way it is and appoint the other members. But at least we had the robust discussion, and I do appreciate all of you. I know most of you personally for a very long time. So, um, it's, we had the conversation, we came to a consensus, and I would say we're leaving it the way it is. And we'll fill the boards, and we do appreciate, because there's a lot of stuff coming down the pike our way that has a lot of impact, especially the comp plan, and that needs to be updated and brought up to twenty-twenty-four standards. Because it's amazing to think that twenty-nineteen is kind of almost outdated now as opposed, it was only five years ago. But we've moved a lot in those five years. So, um, Mr. Parker, you can see that we seem to have come to a consensus to leave it the way it is.
I think, I think we're good. Think y'all are going to go home by seven forty, if you want to. Unless you want to hang around, you're welcome to.
Now, one other thing I want to bring out, and Mr. Stewart, you can help me with this. So, way back in the day, and this came with the, uh, a decision we made a long time ago, made five years ago, I was challenged to take the planning commission class, and I did, and I finished it. So I challenged my colleagues to reach out to Mr. Stewart and take the planning commission class. And that is the class through VCU that all the planning commission members are required to take, and it is a very informative class. So, I would encourage you to talk to Mr. Stewart about putting you on a list to, to take that class. I'm not paying for it. But it just, it's, it's a very informative, and some that, Mr. Nice, did you take it yet? Ms. Farley, I know you just took it, would you give some feedback?
I did. Um, Mr. Fox and I just took it, uh, the last one that was offered, and I found it very beneficial.
I have to say, in December, I reread my book, so, because I wanted to clarify some things. So it is, it is a very good class. It gives you a little bit more insight in the job they do, and, and even opened my eyes again to some of the things I forgot about. But, um, Mr. Stewart, you're going to continue your meeting, so do we have to adjourn out?
Yes, Madam Chair, you would adjourn, and then we will continue our regular planning commission meeting.
All right.
Madam Chair, before you adjourn, so, one thing that we haven't addressed, because we haven't published our vision for the county and, and Mr. Statement with it, is the planning commission's willingness to execute that vision. And, because that's important. We need to be synced up on that. And, um, i- if I may, and, and I, and again, we haven't published it, but I believe our vision is to retain the ruralness of the county, to reduce the tax burden on citizens using business, to grow the county using the financing that comes from businesses, and to work towards-
and to work towards a rural, like main street type atmosphere that attracts tourism into that, that type area. So, and, and hopefully obtaining somewhere, some waterfront edge on a river for the county to be able to use for that purpose as well.
Jumping off of that, Mr. Stroud, so with that idea in mind, and I've thought about this a while and hopefully this planning commission, maybe we need to, in the future, and I, we'd have to sync up the dates that maybe we could have like a work session, maybe even a Saturday work session where we really hash out, because we really need as a county to have a vision, mission statements, just like Mr. Stroud said, that is published so that when we do an economic development plan, when we do any other plans, it's all based on what the, the mission and the vision and the strategic goals are. So what would you, the planning commission feel like maybe on a Saturday, we have like, I don't know if you want to call it a work session, a retreat, something we could really hash out, you know, get off the whiteboard and come up with an overall guiding?
Have, just a question.
Go ahead, Mr.
How many of, of you have read the comprehensive plan?
I've read it many times, but I've.
Yeah. So I mean, I think, you know, at the beginning of the comprehensive plan, we try to, not in a formal way, but we try to sort of state what our goals are and, and how we're going to find the balance between keeping the county rural and accommodating growth and, you know, where and how and that kind of thing. So I mean, I don't, personally, and I don't, I won't speak for my other commission members, but I don't think we got any problems whatsoever listening to and seeking the board supervisor's input to their vision of what, what they think the county, you know, should turn into in the coming years. It's going to grow. That's sort of a fact of life. But how do you want it to go? And what, what are the important things you're trying to accomplish? I have no issue with that. I'd, I'd be more than willing to, to pick a day, weekend, evening, whatever is good for the majority of the folks and, and have that kind of discussion.
Because it has been five years and a lot of things has happened since 2019.
Usually, usually the contractor we pick out, and I know you've been through it before, but usually the contractor we picked out, pick out, has those meetings in the prep for the comprehensive plan in there where we can get together and we talk about it and look at the old, the old comp plan and work on what our vision is for the new one.
I was thinking of it a little early, especially since, um, I know our economic development team is going out and doing an economic development plan. And my concern is there could even be a tourism plan that we actually come up with a unified vision before some of our people go out and do that so that we're all unified in the vision and they can spawn off a economic development plan, a tourism plan based on the major plan.
Well, one, one of the things our contractor does at the start of the comprehensive plan is they, they do hold meetings with the residents of the county, multiple meetings, trying to solicit input from the actual citizens on what's important to them. So I mean, I, it sort of all goes on at the same time, but I agree, economic development, you know, tourism, all that kind of stuff needs to be integrated in with the comprehensive plan and probably into your all's vision.
That's where I was going to thank you for that. Mr. DeCorte?
Just want to reinforce, you know, what others have said, absolutely. That vision is very easy to support. It's a continuity and it's, it's something I think all of us believe in. The, uh, one major idea, trying to, to figure out how to get it in, is establish a land bank. That's where funds, um, in many municipalities, it's derived from a real estate transaction, 1% transaction to go to, to purchase land, conserve land, um, develop community amenities, put out tenders. Uh, we were just talking before the meeting, really the only R, RC type is Berry Beach, you know, zoning type. And acquiring land, uh, to do something like that, to issue a tender to a developer and have that available. So very, very powerful tool for tourism, um, recreation, fishing, hunting, um, and, and related. I'd rather have tourists than smokestacks. I think everybody would agree with that.
Thank you. Do you have any other before, at least have us depart for you? All right. I will make a motion to adjourn our meeting to February 20th, 2024 at 5:30 PM in the boardroom, Rivercombe Building.
Second.
The motion properly made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays, chair votes aye, the board supervisors is adjourned.
Mr. Stewart, we're going to, Stewart, we're going to just take a couple minute break to freshen up for the meeting, powder my nerves.
Now that we're not in the formal recording, so I didn't know about this $50 a meeting thing.
We've been splitting it.
Call to order the thirteen February twenty twenty four meeting of the King George County Planning Commission. For the record, we still have a forum. At this time, I would ask anybody that can please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light. To the Republic. Our nation. Indivisible, liberty and justice.
At this time, we will take a moment to observe a moment of silence. Please bow your heads. Enter bullets. Thank you, everybody. Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is something that very, very well earned. We do have, we'd like to recognize Mr. Ross DeBries. And I think everybody on the, on the planning mission served with Ross for a while. Ross was an excellent asset to the planning commission. He actually was sort of, I, I looked at him as our go-to policy guy. Ross dug in and had a, had an encyclopedic knowledge of state code and, and our, our planning and zoning within the county. And so I'd like to read this. Recognition for outstanding service presented to Mr. Ross DeBries and appreciation for his ten years dedication to the citizens of King George as a member of the King George County Planning Commission. Mr. DeBries demonstrated serious commitment to the tasks and decisions presented, including participation in the review of planned development projects, rezoning applications, special exception permits, text amendments, implementation of zoning and subdivision, subdivision ordinance of King George County, and the King George County Comprehensive Plan. His tireless commitment to duty enhanced life in King George County and served as an admirable example of public service. State of King George County Planning Commission twenty twenty four. Do you have a lovely plaque? Thank you all for putting that together. And it reads exactly what I just, what I just read. So again, Ross, if you're listening, thank you so much for, for all you did. It was a pleasure to serve with you. We miss you and hope everything's going well with you now and in the future. And this will get out to you in the mail. So just wanted to say that if anybody else has any comments about that, I'd be well, more than, more than welcome to hear them. Try to reassemble this package. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ross. All right. Next order of business is public comment. At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. If anybody has any questions or comments, please approach this podium and limit your comments to please three minutes or less and state your name and address. Seeing that there's nobody in the auditorium here to speak this evening, I'll defer to Mr. Dines. Do we have anybody online that'd like to speak, sir?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next order of business is approval of minutes for the January ninth twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting. I will ask if anybody has any comments, please note those on the page. We will look at them and then record it to record if we want to change it or not.
I make the motion as we approve the minutes for the January ninth meeting.
Amen. Motion's been made. Motion's been made and seconded and all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next up on the agenda is community planning liaison naval support activity South Potomac. Mr. Adam Lynch, please have the floor, sir.
Thank you for your, your continued involvement. NSF Dahlgren and NSA South Potomac here in King George County. The item that I think might involve you guys as a, of interest to, to this group is, you may have noticed for about the last three weeks, the, the gate line outside of Dahlgren has been longer than usual. Certainly for, for those of you who, who go on base regularly, probably noticed that. The reason for that is there have been some technical difficulties with the Navy's remote access functions. And as a result, many of the remote employees or hybrid employees are coming back onto the installation full-time. And speaking just for myself, it's, it's roughly doubled the, the wait time at the base gate, which for the first time today, actually extended back onto three oh one. So that's the first time I've seen it that long and certainly could be a source of friction between the, the naval installation in our community, something we're sensitive to. And for the record, I have not yet heard a, a firm time for how long these technical issues are going to continue. But it's something that we're tracking. It's challenging to address that problem. There's a lot of, of people that try to get onto the base. We have, you know, over ten thousand employees that, that regularly come onto the installation. So one, however, topic that, that we're hoping could be something that fruitful that comes from this experience is trying to rekindle the conversation around van pools and ride shares to minimize the number of single occupancy vehicles that come on the installation. So I had a meeting about two weeks ago with a representative from Enterprise, Commute by Enterprise, which is a van pool service. And I'm scheduling right now a meeting with GW Ride Connect, which is coordinated through the FAMPO, Fredericksburg Area Metro Planning Organization, to try to bring that conversation back. Because having just started myself in October, I know that, I don't know what it was like in the pre-COVID area where there was, you know, not the idea of hybrid work or remote work. And sometimes maybe gate lines were, were longer back then. So more of a, a culture of carpooling was in place back then. So just wanted to kind of keep you guys in the loop as we continue those conversations that we're looking at creative solutions to gate congestion.
Have you done, have you have any data to indicate where there are kind of clusters of people living that come to base? I mean, is it mostly Fredericksburg or, or where, or where about? I was sort of thinking, I mean, would it make sense to explore any kind of, you know, park and ride option with a, with a bus type of thing? For, you know, folks, if there's a cluster, let's say in Fredericksburg or something like that?
I, I think absolutely, sir. The conversation I had with Commute by Enterprise was really useful. To give you some numbers, prior to COVID, there were about fifteen different van pools that were active coming to Dahlgren. And that is, by the way, a van pool is a, a group of people that privately essentially get together and rent a van and they take turns driving it. And so they, they, you know, maybe John drives on Monday and, and Mike drives Tuesday and, and Jan drives Wednesday. And you go around the cycle and you, you save yourself the wheels, the, the miles on your own car. Now, post-COVID, we're at about three of those van pools. So a small fraction of what was in place before.
I was actually wondering if there, you know, if you have the data to support maybe private, you know, bus line to come in and offer that service for folks if they, they.
Absolutely. I, I, and that's something.
Railway sized bus type of things.
I'm learning about right now, but yes, we're, we're looking, you know, loo- looking at all potential options. That's, that conversation is just getting started. There was talk, I know, last year about the Fredericksburg bus, the FXBG Go bus, starting a dedicated commuter bus back and forth between Fredericksburg and Dahlgren. And it actually, it, it scored very well in Smart Scale, which is VDOT's funding programs. However, the project ended up diverting its funding to different sources because they realized that once you get on base here, there was no infrastructure to move people around within the installation. So say you, you arrive on a great FXBG Go shuttle that comes from Fredericksburg, it lea- leaves you out at the gate. How do you get around once you're on the installation? So, you know, one option i- is can you set up a shuttle within the installation that then brings people around to the hotspots? Goes to the, the kind of main employment centers, goes to the, you know, the, the, the NEX, all the, the, the important stuff that you need to get to. So I think these conversations need to start again because we have a short memory in the, the Navy. You know, a lot of people who are here on base at Dahlgren, they weren't here four years ago. Maybe they were in San Diego or Hawaii. So that memory turns over so fast and you have to keep those conversations going. So that's something that our, our, our command and Captain Wilson is going to be working on.
Yeah, there used to be a taxi service on the base.
Really?
Run by the transportation pool. Yes, sir.
Really? When was that?
Absolutely. That was back in the early eighties. You had, you had taxi, you had taxi stops at every one of the buildings and you would call up a number and they would come around to the stop. You'd say, could you come pick me up at stop twelve? And you'd go out and stand in front of your building and they'd pick you up and then they ma- make a circuit and drop you off.
Well, thank you for that information. I'm, I'm glad that there's a precedent for it. So that's, yeah, I, I think I need to.
Only one of the two people around that have been around here long enough to know that they used to do that. And there used to be full-sized buses that would come out of Fredericksburg. And there was a pretty good sized bus that came up out of Colonial Beach. This time as well.
Information.
Yeah. Yeah. It was all run by the transportation pool. I mean, it wasn't a big bus. It was a basic fifteen passenger, you know, van that one of the transportation folks drove, drove around. That's cool. Of course, that was back when they had garden mail too.
So he's talking about pre-I C C two. So good luck.
So I do commend you on those solutions. However, you put, you know, a bunch of people in a vehicle and those IDs still have to be scanned. So the time that it takes to get them all, you know, through the gate, I would say have, has the bait, has the base looked at? I know they've increased the two lanes in the front gate in the morning one direction, but I've seen other bases that put four or six people in that line so that, you know, six cars can get scanned and move along at a faster pace. So I didn't know if that was a possibility as well.
So not in my limited time working at Dahlgren, I've been here since October, that has not come up that I'm aware. But certainly with the experience we've had over the last three weeks with the increases in volume, I think those kinds of solutions are, are going to have to be back on the table.
I will say, I think we get a little foiled here in Dahlgren because what we call traffic is not quite equivalent to other military bases around.
Right. My, my friend at Quantico, he, he laughs when I say that there's a, you know, traffic at the gate here.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's a, that's my report.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it, Mr. Lynch. All right. Next item on the agenda is plan review, which we do not have one this evening. Same with public hearings, not one this evening. Old business review of the bylaws. I believe when we spoke about this last month, the question was, are there any changes in bylaws? And the answer was no.
This was a result of the discussion we had for one change in the bylaw. That was to, that was to incorporate the planning commission discussion on public comment. So. So if everyone could take a moment, this is page twelve of the bylaws, section four, order of business. Just looking for consensus among the commission that that is how you want it to be. So we incorporated a red line to show you where the planning commission discussion on public comment is. If that is a consensus, then on your next agenda, that'll be referenced. So that will be incorporated right in between public comment and the approval of minutes.
Everybody.
Captain Sutick?
All right. Do we need to vote on that, Mr. Stewart?
Take the consensus.
Okay. Everyone feel like we have, all right. I'm seeing heads bobbing up and down the right way. All right. Next item on business or on the agenda, rather, is new business capital improvements plan FY twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine, request for public hearing.
I swear, we did this every three months.
I make a motion that we have a public hearing on the capital improvement plan fiscal year twenty five to twenty nine.
Motion been made.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded and all in favor? Opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right. Director's report. Mr. Stewart, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two director's reports for you tonight. Started out Sadat Sakit, who was our environmental inspector. His last day with the department was January twenty sixth. He was an asset and we wish him well in his future endeavors. In his replacement, we welcome Austin Schuman. He's the new environmental inspector. His first day with the department was Monday, February fifth. Austin's lived in the county for a little over seven years and has experience in this realm and he's made a very nice transition. We'd also like to welcome, welcome Matthew Lanson. He is a new building inspector. Matthew transferred to the department through King George County Fire and Rescue. Familiar in building code as well as electrical. Matt's doing a good job. So this currently leaves the department with two vacancies. Those are both still in the planner positions. Moving to November permit intake, we did sixteen new single-family dwellings with a total of a hundred and one permits for a monthly revenue of seventy-two thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and nine cents. An average of five hundred forty-eight inspections. That's a daily average of twenty-three. Moving to December, we did sixteen new single-family dwellings and a total of a hundred ten permits with a monthly revenue of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy-one cents and four hundred twenty-six inspections for the month. That brings the physical yield year total revenue to four hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Moving down on the report for new submittals. This report was actually furnished before we received this application, but I thought it'd be beneficial to give you a heads up. We did receive the Gibson Solar project. That is a special exemption request. That's a hundred and thirty-two megawatt utility scale solar project located in the Shiloh District. Several of the consultants that are doing this project actually came and talked with us during the development of the new zoning and ordinance update. So you will see some familiar faces there. I believe, don't quote me on this, but I believe the total area for the permit was roughly eighteen hundred acres and total panel array was just over a thousand. It's about thirty separate parcels that are connected to the Shiloh District. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Stewart, what's the status of that?
So that was just deemed complete by our office. So that has recently been transmitted and we're waiting for a pre-application meeting with all the state agencies before we begin the review. So it's still a couple of months away.
Okay. Thank you.
And then to finish, is that going to, just, I don't want to get ahead of it, but is that going to require a re-substation upgrade in that area? It could. We'll, we'll determine that under the, yes, sir. Still early in the process. Moving down, upcoming agenda items for the March twelfth meeting. We're going to have a public hearing for the capital improvement of projects, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine requests. And then also there was kind of some delays with the consultant for the comprehensive plan amendment. We do have someone acting in now, Mr. Norm Masavi, who was the previous administrator in West Monroe County. It's coming in and helping us until we get a full-time appointment. So I'm working with them to kind of develop a contract to get somebody. So we're optimistic to have those discussions for the comp plan on your next meeting. And that will conclude the director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All right. Other business, I don't believe we have any, which brings us to the point of the evening where I will ask for an adjournment till Tuesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty four.
I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn until Tuesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded and all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Everybody have a great evening. See you on the twelfth of March.